Good evening to all. My name is Barbara Ward and on behalf of the members of Scrubgrass Grange, I would like to welcome you to our Meet the Candidates night. For those of you unfamiliar with our Grange, we are a local community service organization under the umbrella of the Pennsylvania State Grange and the National Grange. While Grange is maintaining a position of political neutrality and we do not endorse candidates, we strive to inform ourselves and our neighbors regarding the platforms of candidates who are running for office. We do have legislative policies, priorities, and goals, and our current local, state, and national legislative priority is equality in broadband access for all, so that our rural friends and neighbors may have the same informational, educational, health-related, and work-related opportunities as our urban and suburban populations. Our format for tonight is as follows. Candidates drew numbers and will be given an opportunity to introduce themselves in the order of their number, with number one being here and going all the way to the end there. They will then be given three minutes each to make their statements. And we have a timer, the gentleman in the blue shirt right there, and he will notify you when you have one minute left. Okay? So he's gonna stick that little finger up there and say, "One minute."
Which finger?
Index cards have been provided to the audience to submit written questions for the candidates, and I already have some of those questions. They will be reviewed for appropriateness of content, read aloud, and each candidate will be given a one-minute opportunity to respond, and I alternate who is the first one to respond. So it's sort of an equal, you might be first or you might be last, but you're gonna get your turn. As a moderator, I reserve the right to amend any questions, to combine similar questions, or to not ask a question that I deem irrelevant. Once all written questions have been answered, we will give each candidate one minute to give a concluding statement. Any candidate for row offices or for local political office who is present will then be introduced and allowed to give a brief introduction of themselves and serve them to conclude. And we have refreshments over there. So is everybody clear on our format? Uh, we have one minute to answer the questions, yes. And each person will be given one minute to answer the question. Okay? All right, any other questions? And, uh, yes, sir.
As we said before, are we introducing ourselves first and then going into?
You will introduce yourself by name and then we'll come back and let you take your statement. Okay? And there's a microphone there. You might wanna turn it on and put it down there with our number one person. Thank you, Joe. Okay. Are we ready? Oh, I didn't wanna mention, and we need to think about her. Bonnie Summers was unable to attend tonight because she has an illness in her family, so keep her in your thoughts. Okay, Dr. Brooks, would you like to begin?
I'm Tim Brooks.
Hi, everyone, I'm Sam Breen, running on the Republican ticket.
I'm Chipper Granovich, current County Commissioner, running on the Democratic ticket.
I'm Darryl Carr, also running on the Republican ticket.
My name is Joseph Relyell, now two on the Republican ticket.
And my name is Mike Delaney, I'm also on the Republican ticket.
Well, go ahead and let Dr. Brooks take his three minutes and make his statement.
Ladies, I'm Tim Brooks. I live in Cherokee Township with my family. I'm a resident of the county for 25 years now. I have a pet I do practice with offices in Franklin and Titusville. And I've had honor and privilege for the last 12 years to serve as County Commissioner. Over those years, we have fostered culture of cooperation and teamwork throughout the county and proud of the work in concert with the other row officers, the judiciary, employees of the county, to lead the county to the forefront of counties in commonwealth. Most of, a lot of the programs have been implemented. The other counties and Harrisburg has used as examples of the ways to do things, to be efficient with the tax dollars and to provide the services that are necessary and required to provide. So I'm proud of that accomplishment and appreciate being able to continue with my service to the county. I was unsure if I'm gonna run again, and I had a lot of directors of the county and the other county officers and the row officers asked me if I would consider running again. So it's an honor to have worked with them and an honor that they've asked me to try to reelect and continue with what we started in the county. Thank you. I'd like to thank Grange for having me for this evening and for inviting me to attend. Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Tim. I also wanna thank the Grange and the Groces for this. This is truly one of the great small D democratic traditions of Manango County. I know that I've been, I remember my first time coming to this was maybe eight years old, and throughout the years I've been back time and again. And it's really an honor to sit up here. I have a lot of memories of my dad sitting up here. I hopefully won't leave you guys as angry as he sometimes left the crowd. But I'm Sam Breen, I'm running for, as a Republican, for Manango County Commissioner. I have, I was born and raised in Oil City. I worked for, went to Alligator College in Meadville. I worked for a family business and then about 10 years ago, I started, or less than 10 years ago, but better part of 10 years ago, I started working for Congressman Mike Telly. He's from Butler, conservative Republican from Butler. When we started, he actually represented this area. He represented Scrubgrass, Clintonville, Hamilton. And I worked with him down in Washington DC. I've worked with him in the district. Done just about every job in the office that a staffer could. And I've gained a lot of experience working at all levels and with businesses, large and small, all over the region. And I wanna bring that expertise to focus on my home, which is Manango County, where my heart is. And I think that there's a lot that we can do, especially in the southern end. I've done a lot of work with, legislatively, with the Scrubgrass coal, waste coal firepower plant. We've, it was coming on hard times a few years back. And thanks to, unlike Piney Creek and Clarion, it didn't shut down thanks to some of the work we did. I also think there's a lot of opportunities with the 80, with the 80, 79 corridor that we need to really, that we need to push more on. Alright, thanks.
I'm Chipper Granovich, current County Commissioner, and thank you for having us here at the Grange tonight. Thank you, the Groces, for this. I have to give a full disclosure. I am a Grange member and I am a member of this Grange. And that happened real quick, I believe it was at a half-chicken dinner a few years back that I got roped right in. But the one thing I really pride myself on is agriculture and agricultural issues. And that's why Grange membership is a big for me, aside from the other organizations I belong to. But the Grange is one from agricultural roots. It started and gave opportunities to western and rural Pennsylvania that we've never had if it wasn't for the Grange and the hard work of the Grangers in the past, where rural electric came from, where the broadband fights coming out of. Those issues are near and dear to rural Pennsylvania hearts, and the Grange is the one that started that. And the Grange is the one that advocates and fights for it. So Barb and I talked a decent bit on rural broadband and what we can do, as well as Betsy, who's the former president of the Grange. She's now with FCC on the broadband initiative. So there's a lot of issues that affect and that come out of this building here as well as Wesley and Ridgeland. So the Grange is a great opportunity and I advocate you to actually join if you haven't had a chance to yet. And if you aren't already, please think into it. So aside from that, agriculture issues are one of my biggest priorities in the past three years, four years. And that got roped into me with the Farm Bureau, with the Grange, and other areas where we can grow. Whether it's the milk crisis, whether it's anything dealing in agriculture, it's something that's near and dear to my heart and how to at least keep moving forward Pennsylvania's industrial industry. That's just part of it. But through that, in the past four years, we also tackled tough issues. We tackled the Oakley epidemic that was ravaging our communities and what we can do to bring awareness and be the forefront out of the state and what we can do working with others to make that happen. We're working on the jail issues now and the population of the jail. And through that, I sit as chairman of Criminal Justice Advisory Board, chairman of our reentry program, to have the first reentry program in the county of Manango in decades. So we're working hard on other issues. And those issues is a long distance long, whether that be working with other commissioners across the state, whether regionally, statewide, as well as elected officials that we have, from Representative James to GT Thompsons, whoever else it can be, to get Manango County on the map and get Manango County noticed. I always say we don't have county lines, we have county personalities. It's getting out above those county lines to make Manango County known and on the map again, which hasn't been in a while. So that's been my agenda for the first four years. I may use the word agenda. To get Manango County's voice heard has been the biggest thing I've worked on, whatever sector that may be.
Thank you.
I too would like to thank the Grange and the Groces for having us today. I'm Darryl Carr. I own, I'm a elder and an employee at Waymar Cards Plumbing and HBC in Franklin, Pennsylvania. Decided to run for Commissioner because I feel we need to change in the Commissioner's office. I believe the last 10 years have been great ones. I think with my 37 years of business experience, I think that would be a real asset in the Commissioner's office. Hardworking, I'm dedicated, and I would like to work hard for the people in the county. I'd like to bring to the Commissioner's office in Manango County strength and dedication and hard work. We need three Commissioners if we're willing to work hard and work together so we can go and work with other community officials and townships and boroughs so we can tackle the problems that I see. And I've talked to a lot of business people that we don't have work ethic in our area. We can't expect industries to want stuff in our area if we don't have people to grow from and to employ. And that's one of the things I would like to work on. Thank you.
Thank you, Grange, for having us. Thank you, Groces, and thank you guys for coming out this evening. I really appreciate taking time out of your evening to come and listen to us. And I thank Derek for being here and live streaming this as well.
My name is Joseph Relyell. Again, like I stated, I'm on the Republican ticket. I was born and raised in Clarion County. Moved up here about 17 and a half years ago, back when the press gas jumped to 165. So we thought we should be a little close to work, but now we should be only 165. But we have raised our kids in Manango County and it has been a great opportunity to do so. We've been involved as a family in a lot of different things over the years. I did a lot of coaching when my kids were younger. Really involved in my church, St. Michael's Hall. But my, one of my greatest accomplishments is the business that I have with my son. We started for him when he was 12, and he's now 18. It's trade fairly long care and landscaping. And we have been so successful in what we do. We don't even advertise much at all. The work that we do speaks for itself. But what I would like to bring to the Commissioner's office is my experience too in business. I graduated from Trinum Techniary with an associate's degree and mechanical degree that needed drafting and design. Looked for a job, for a while I kept hearing that I was not, not what they were looking for or not experienced enough with what they're looking for. So one of the key things that I wanna concentrate on is I wanna look at ways that we can have opportunities for adults to get skills for the jobs that we do have in the county. What I'd like to do is maybe see if we can do something with the road tech, evening classes. Now it would be like a certificate class or something. Something that wouldn't cost as much as a college, but also, you know, the people that have a family in this area wanna have to relocate to do so. The other thing I'd like to do is, you know, one thing I've always been successful at is growing a business. You know, you can't grow something if you're not out cold door knocking, so to say. So I think that we need to get better at going out and looking for potential people that want to move to this county with a business and be held accountable for how many we're doing on. Because unless you're going out and finding people that might be interested, you can't just wait for things to fall on your lap. And when they do fall on your lap, you have to be good at closing those deals. So once again, my name is Joseph Relyell and thank you for being here this evening. Look forward to the discussion.
Thanks, Joe. I too wanna thank you guys all for coming here, for hosting, for Derek, for live streaming this. My name is Mike Delaney. I am the executive assistant at the Franklin Area Chamber of Commerce and I'm also running on the Republican ballot. I was born and raised in Manango County and grew up in St. Michael's and not too far away from here. I attended Christian Life Academy and like most of our youth, I left to pursue a higher education. I went to Penn State, Barren. I have a bachelor's degree in aerospace science where I studied astrophysics and geology. Currently, I am the, I'm on the Franklin City Council. I'm the vice chairman of the Redevelopment Authority. I am the past chairman of the Kiwanis Club. I also sit on the board of directors for the Mango Museum of Art, Science, and Industry and the Oil Creek and Titusville Railroad. The reason I'm running, I wanna hold the line on the taxes. I wanna increase the transparency within our government. I wanna work with the local agencies around here to develop a training program for, to train up a viable workforce. As I said, working for the Franklin Area Chamber. I deal with these guys every day, you know. This is the life I live. The number one complaint I hear from business owners around here is being able to find reliable workers. So I think that's something that we need to tackle because we have six, nearly 700 jobs vacant in this county that we need to fill. I also wanna bring in new jobs in the county. I'm a firm believer that governments aren't the ones that create the jobs, it's the businesses. So the only way we're gonna do that is by attracting them, you know, we offer better tax incentives. So again, my name's Mike Delaney. I'm running on the Republican ballot. I'll be number three. And thank you, Catherine Bingham.
Just keep the line, and I'll start with a question. Since you had addressed the tax issue, I'm going to start with a question regarding taxes. And it is, what are your ideas on how to not raise taxes? Okay, one minute.
Usually the first response, just in Pennsylvania it seems, is to increase the taxes. Whenever we start to run out of money, let's just tax them. Franklin recently just got reassessed for the community development block. But that came back and said that 53% of the city is considered impoverished. We can't ask them to bear any more tax burden. I think we're gonna have to start getting creative with some of the ways. We don't have to cut departments, but we need to start looking at different ways to address the issue. Just because it's the way we've always done it doesn't mean it's the best way or it's the only way. So that's one of the things I would like to do is look at the budget closely, see if there's not ways that we can't spend our money wisely.
And we'll just go right down the line. Go ahead.
I feel there's different ways that we could think outside the box and not have to raise taxes. I too want to look over the budget quite in detail because I feel there's some areas along there that maybe we could grow a little bit more. I feel that we've worked diligently at focusing on businesses that might be interested in coming in and we could get more revenue working in our favor. But we have to be diligent. We have to be out there looking. We can't wait for it to come to us. And that's, that's one thing that I'm very passionate about because I feel that if you keep doing the same thing, you're gonna get the same result, right? We hear that all the time. So I think that if we could find avenues on the budget that can be grown, then that's where we can make those changes to be able to grow that revenue and not have to worry about raising taxes.
Yeah, I feel we need to dig into the budget, see what can be captured from the budget. I know the prison part of the budget is very hot. We're spending a lot of money shipping prisoners to Butler County where if there's some facilities around Manango County that we could put them in, we can save ourselves some money there. Definitely need to look into the whole budget and see what, what waste is, can be, can be saved because like Mike said, you know, 53% of other water income people can't pay up to any more taxes.
So on a $60 million budget on the high end, a lot of that's from local taxpayer dollars off of properties that we have in the county. So in 2020 is the census. So a lot of that money, so that $49 million that's left over state federal dollars that we receive for programs and X, Y, and Z that might be. So I encourage you, when the census comes out, to make sure you take that seriously and get your neighbors and friends to fill that out because that's our funding for the next 10 years based on our current population. That's one area that I have to plug that for the future. But it's progressive thinking and it's forward thinking that can change the budget. It's outside the box thing that we can do within our budget that hasn't been thought of before because you get stuck in a rut. This is how it is, this is how it should always be. But there's also ideas and opportunities that aren't thought of in a budget. And those come out and you're against the wall about raising taxes, what things can be changed and what things can't because the status quo isn't good enough anymore. So when you get against that corner, if you're in that wall, that's when you start thinking of different opportunities so you don't have to do a budget increase.
I don't wanna raise taxes as I don't think anyone up here wants to raise taxes. I think there are, there are two ways you can, I've reviewed the budget and I'll be honest, there's not a lot of room there. I would say one good thing, the current chair, the current Commissioners have actually done a very good job of kind of cutting things to as thinly as they can. That said, there are two ways you can deal with the budget. You can tax your way out of it or you can think about how to grow your way out of it. And we can do that. And I think the, down here, there's a perfect opportunity. We have the 80 to 79 corridor that, I'll be honest, Mercer County and some of the surrounding counties have been needing Manango County's lunch on what they're doing and what they've developed around the exits of their interstates. And it's something that we have to be very, there, we have to be thinking about what we can do long-term to make it so we don't have to raise taxes. And that's about making sure you have a good return on the investment of the dollars that your taxpayers are spending.
Being last is difficult here, so I have reiterated everybody else's, no one wants to raise taxes. We wanna keep the line of the taxes. We look at the budget line by line every year and during the year, we look at the budget constantly to see where we can save monies, where we can take money where we have and put them in plumbing in other areas. Like Tim said, we only have about $12 million we get from county taxes, from property tax. And that's where the county gets its money, from property taxes. Unfortunately, that's the only place we can find tax money to help us. We have looked at things line by line. We have changed vendors. We constantly are looking at new vendors and cheaper ways of providing the same services. And Sam is right too. We need to get new industry here, get new buildings. That's the only way we can tax. If we have to have a new building, we have to increase the assessment of the buildings to be able to get more taxes in to help us without raising these taxes.
Alright, thank you. The next several questions are going to focus on the economy in southern Manango County. And to that end, the first question, and we're going to, well, let Ms. Breen go first, is what can we do to stimulate business in southern Manango County? To stimulate economic development in southern Manango County?
Sure, thank you. Now, I've been talking a lot about opportunity zones that we have in the northern part of the county, Franklin and Oil City. You have an opportunity belt that runs right through southern Manango County. And that's I-80. And you have 79 right down the road from it. We're exactly as far away, actually closer to that intersection than most of Mercer County is. And they advertise it like crazy. And they've been very successful in bringing in industry and offering the exits on their, in their corridor. I think that we need to be pushing that. And I think we have a built-in opportunity here in the southern, in the southern end, to be very successful. We have a history of great entrepreneurs here, right? It's time to look at Hummus and look at Hickman Lumber. Those are great thriving businesses. We wanna make it easier for them to do business down here. And that's gonna be one of my priorities. Hold me to it.
So this is a good question because this conversation on the County Commissioners Association side, and a small group of us came up and they talked about the mindset lawyers are moving them. They talked about how many residents from Manango would travel into lawyers, how many from Mercer, how many from Clarion were coming. And it was astounding that we had 200 or 150 from Manango that were going there. So through that work, it actually grew to another level. And it actually just started in March at our County Commissioners Conference in Harrisburg, where there were a small group of us, and it comes back to my point on county lines, a small group of us Commissioners worked together or were talking together about how do we get an I-80 corridor Commissioner group together that works on that. And with the USDA not landing in Clarion, if the USDA landed in Clarion, that's a great opportunity for Manango because they're gonna employ 600 people. But what other opportunities are there that might not fit in Mercer, but might fit in Manago? What other opportunities might fit in Butler, but that doesn't fit here? And how do we work together as County Commissioners from our region to make these opportunities grow? Because Hamilton touches four counties down within a very short distance. Why aren't we working, well, we are at one, closer together to make these opportunities come to all of us?
Yeah, I have to agree with Sam. You guys do have a built-in advantage down here with interstate A. Because I know up in this Franklin area, that's one of the things, we're so far from 80 and especially when the ride A corridor was targeted to shut down the two lanes. That was definitely gonna hurt industry up there. But you guys are real close to 80 and that would draw more opportunities for more businesses to become. Because it's just, the interstate's right there. So that would be a nice, nice thing outside of Manango County is to use the A corridor to bring in more industry.
So I feel that in order to bring in new businesses, we need to offer them something, right? So I would like to look into the tax abatement because I think no matter what we're talking about, southern county, southern part of the county or what, we need to give them something that goes good for them. So not only is it a good area as you're getting off the interstates to try to, try to grow those areas, but let's look into other things too. I mean, as a business owner, you know, it doesn't matter if you're employing one person or you're employing 100 people, you're still generating revenue for the area that you live. So I think that we can get better at growing the belt, as they spoke of. But I also think that we need to look deeper into it and find how do we attract these businesses? Just because we have the opportunity doesn't mean that we have people willing to commence. We need to find ways to grab their attention.
Thank you, Joe. I've often said throughout this campaign that, you know, down here, you guys are the gateway to Manago County. I-80 is one of the busiest interstates in the whole country. I've driven it from coast to coast, so I see all the traffic that happens there. I think the best way to develop it is getting the word out. It's all about marketing. There's lots of prime real estate down here along the R E corridor. It's getting that word out. The cost of living is so low. As Joe said, it's about offering better tax abatements to these companies. It's trying to bring them in and let them know that we're not that far from the world. We're an hour away from here. We're an hour away from Pittsburgh. We're two hours to Cleveland. So any direction you go, you can be in a major city fairly quickly. And that access to I-80 should be our biggest selling point.
Dr. Brooks needs a chance. What was that? You don't need a chance?
So I think we're in agreement that, oh, that's wrong.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, thanks. Anyway, we're in agreement, you know, eighty needs to be developed further. We're working on that, the, you know, the regional alliances worked on that, the Economic Development Authority from the county has worked on that. We're continuing to work on marketing and attracting people here. And we do offer learners, we offer tax abatements now. So those things are in place and those are good ideas that you gentlemen offered, but we're already doing those things and we have to do them more and we have to continue to work on that. The other thing that we're not doing that, no one really mentioned yet, is bringing broadband through the area. We have the connection up in Pleasantville that's coming down and we're going, we're looking at now for some companies and some other counties to develop through this area and to get down into some of the other counties south of here to connect into the statewide network through Kenborough, to connect into our direct connection to Chicago. So that's one of the ways that we are working to help bring this area up so they can compete with the urban areas, with the that will produce a fiber optic network.
Dr. Brooks, I'm going to let you go first on this question, okay? Does the county have any plans or interest in developing an industrial park in the area of the Struggrass Generation Park?
Not at the current time, no, we have no plans in doing that. We have industrial parks now in the area that, and more area closer here to eighty that we believe would be more opportunity to develop than this progress right now.
I honestly, this is why we come down here and do these things. I have thought about that, that I'd be absolutely open to it. Like I said, I've done a lot of work with the Struggrass Power Plant over the years, had a meeting with their management just a couple of weeks ago, sitting down talking about legislation that keeps them viable and, and it's essential what they do. It's a win-win, it's a no-brainer, but unfortunately sometimes, sometimes in D.C. there's not enough brain seeming for someone to make good decision on a no-brain decision. So we have, but we, but we have done a lot of work, actually Piney Creek closed down. That was a similar fire, a coal fire power plant over at Tarian. There was another one refuse fire power plant down in Cambria County that closed down. But some of Struggrass were brought by because of some of the work that I did with Mike Kelly to make sure that they remain viable. So we need to be able to build on that any way we can. It's a great asset we have here.
I would say an optimistic approach, we're not far off from addressing that considering our other industrial parks are starting to fill up. And I'll go to another industrial park that Mr. Phelps from O R A and I were part of a conversation, they were talking about the regular water system, not the one by Hamilton. And it was a joint county project that was looking to get funding to bring water to the campground and more water availability to the truck stop at Hamilton. And those same opportunities can help boost that, truck stop off of eighty and help grow that. The more viable water we have with the K site there, it's that more relevant and more growing and as our other industrial parks are filling up, I have fifteen Franklin's full, pretty close to one, the next roads getting full. There's other opportunities and other ways to build and other ways to grow. And as we start to expand more and more, this is the perfect opportunity to do that. And if we can get that to happen, I'm glad they wouldn't do that. So thank you.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not real familiar with what the county's doing and not doing right now. I know as commissioner, I would definitely have an open door. I would like to work with, with all the communities and like the industrial complexes up north, they are getting full and that would probably be a great place to open one up. But like I say, I'm willing to meet with borough officials and have town hall meetings and discuss things and if we could get three commissioners working together, maybe something could materialize.
So the actual question was, does the, does the commissioners have, or does the county have a plan to put one in?
Any, yes, interest or plan?
All right, so, so I can't answer that question obviously, but I, I do know that, that the ones that we do have have been successful. So I would definitely entertain the idea as long as everything, like Chip said, with the water was good and we had the interest to fill that up, I definitely think it would be a route that we could go. I mean, we have to be thinking outside the box, we have to be looking at opportunities for each area that, that we can grow, grow that particular area. So even though at this time they, they don't, that would be something that I'd be interested in entertaining.
Yeah, I don't think any of us are close off to that idea. This is any opportunity that we can take to grow the area, we need to, we need to jump at it. One of the things I've learned throughout my short thirty-one years here is that opportunity rarely looks like opportunity. A lot of times it looks like a dead end. You have to be willing to chase it to see where it leads you. Case in point, the job I got, just started out as a part-time job, I was just a front desk. I got promoted up to the executive assistant within a matter of months. You have to be willing to take that, take the chance on it and that's something that I'm hoping to do.
Next question, we'll start with Mr. Brown. And it's our last question that is in that realm of economic development. What can you do to promote tourism in Benango County and in Southern Benango County in particular?
I spoke about this a little bit at the last forum. You know, we always talk about how far we are from the cities, but what we have to start looking at is how we can be a getaway from the people in the cities. I think that we, we do need to look at different areas and the tourism that we can grow. Now, that doesn't really have an actual line item in, in the budget itself because that is a, that is, the money that comes from that is a collective tax from like the Airbnb's and any other hotels that you might stay at in the area. But I think we need to find a way that we can kind of group everything together from our bike trails to our parks to, you know, kayaking. We have the water source locally, we have the bike trails that go from Pittsburgh to Erie. So I think that we just need to find areas, a way to get the word out of what all we have in a different way that we have on the start.
That's fine.
I work really close with the oil regional alliance. This is one of the big things that they've been handling. Actually, the director, my good friend John Phelps, said when he first moved here fifteen some years ago, five years ago, he didn't notice the kayaks and bike trails being used like they are now. So we are spreading the word, we have a lot of beautiful assets here. At the Chamber, we work with the Allegheny Mountain Trail Association for the, for the bike trail. So, so we're actively doing this. This is something I'm, I'm actually kind of passionate about. Like I said, what we have here to offer is kind of unique to other places like Pittsburgh. Pittsburgh has a bike trail, but it's not as secluded as ours is. We have people coming from all over the country. I think it's, again, it goes back to marketing. It's about spreading the word, it's about letting people know what we have up here.
Like Mike was saying, we collect the hotel tax. The O R A is our tourist promotion agency, which we do that very well, promotion. And we have no problem continuing with that relationship with them. They do a good job for us. I guess specifically some of the good jobs, we've worked with some of the B and Bs down in Hamilton area to help market them. We've worked in the area down in Hamilton, so we tried to develop some of the refinery sites. We're looking at giving super fund money to clean up those sites and then be able to develop them into recreation and into residential type of areas. So those are the things we're working on right now specifically.
What would you do to promote tourism in Benango County, but Southern Benango County is capable?
Sure. All right, well, I like we've talked about the, the way we, money for marketing in the area tourism-wise comes from hotel tax. The way you get more of that is by getting more people to come up here. We've had a lot in staying in our hotels and what, I mean, I think we all know exactly what makes this area special. We have our unique history, which is unlike any place in the world, really. We're the birthplace of the oil industry. We have unique beauty that I only realized when I was working down in D.C. and I tried to get out of town for the weekend and find something that I can do around here free and I'd have to drive three hours in traffic to go forty miles away and then pay forty-five dollars to rent a raft to float down a stinky river. All right? Now, it's not like that here. These are things that people want to come here for. So we just have to keep, keep promoting and, and actually it's what, it's exactly the type of stuff that young people are searching for nowadays and they can find that gem up here in Benango County and we'll all thrive in this.
I drive around, explore the county when I'm just driving around. And the other week I went down Struggrass Road and I went down Rockland Road where all the camps are, I went through Ketterdale, down where all the camps are. And the number of camps of people from not here in Ohio plays or Pittsburgh stickers where they want their vehicle is incredible. So it comes to the campgrounds and it comes to those communities where these people come to. And I'll use the River Nits as an example. The River Nits and what they're doing down there on the water with their music in the evenings on Friday, Saturday night, now they have a little water there, that draws people in. And they did the dinosaur thing for the kids and they had music that night. The community events and the small community events are bringing the people out of their homes and into the community to explore. And I had this conversation with a couple elected officials in Hamilton and they said, what do we need to do or what, what can we do to help? You have a huge campground right down the road, what are you doing to draw them into Hamilton to spend money? It's getting the people out of their camps, into your community so they don't buy their beer and their food in Pittsburgh, they buy it here. And getting that out there, getting them in the community is what we need to grow the tourism aspect. And it's slowly happening with its game here.
I think we're all in agreement, we have a lot of what I call diamond in the rough. Our bike trails are two mile ride car. My wife and I use the bike trail quite often and I don't know how many times we've run into people from Pittsburgh area that say, you guys are so fortunate to have something so beautiful in your area. That's what we have to do, we got to market it and get more people from Pittsburgh up here. For a long weekend, using the hotels, so we get that hotel tax and we'll be able to develop more. We, we have such natural beauty in the rivers and bike trail, we need to definitely market it more and get people from the area in Cleveland, we're so close to them, get over there because we do have a beautiful place in Benango County.
I believe you were the last one again, so guess what? You need to be the first one for the next question. And there's, I have two questions on this issue, I'll, I'm going to combine them. As a county commissioner, what would you do to improve internet access, i.e. improve access to broadband in, for residents of rural Benango County?
This is a subject I'm not real familiar with, but broadband is definitely important. I guess we would just have to work with other communities in the area and try to expand to, like I say, I'm not real familiar with it, but I'm willing to work hard and get it developed so we can open it up to more people than are in the outer areas of Franklin once.
You can go either direction you want.
Towards the beginning of the camp, my campaign, I sat in with a lot of these guys at a, at a fiber optic seminar. And the commissioners had worked on getting the fiber optic lines through Franklin, but there's a cost there that, that you have to pay to get put into it. And I think that it almost has to be a community to community talk to where you find out what would be the most cost efficient way to get those lines down here. That's something that like there, I don't have a lot of knowledge on, but it's, it's something that is very important for any business to grow or even for your own home use to be able to get online and search for things that you need.
So as I was mentioning, the county's kind of started taking the first steps towards building infrastructure. I was actually asked by the commissioners to help them with this project when I was first hired at the Chamber. There are companies out there that have an interest in doing this. One of the ones that we're working with right now is, they, they helped us get the connection between Chicago and Philadelphia and now they come and told us that they're interested in, you know, at least getting into the business aspect of it. So I think part of it is going to be building up the businesses, building up the infrastructure for that. As we stated earlier, there's a high cost to build this. So we have to, we have to get the people to buy into it to make it worthwhile for the companies to expand. Can't remember the exact numbers, but we've, for about a mile, it was about fifty thousand dollars just to lay the fibers. So, so it's a huge cost that we're asking somebody to, to take on.
Like, like we're saying, it's a large cost to put fiber down. We have over sixty miles of fiber down the county. That's over three million dollars worth of fiber that the county's paid us a half million dollars for. And with use, the money we've used has come from grant money. We have partnered with ZIO as one of the companies to help bring that fiber through the county. They have offered, because of the deal they have with us, the relationship with them, they have, they have offered great deals to the businesses in the area. We are now working with, continuing, this is part of that public safety network. And that network now is going to extend down through Armstrong County as we come through this way. So we're now working on developing those lines, the route we want to take. And those monies will be coming from Pima and Pima. And the county will have, and the local government has very little money to those high costs of putting the backbone. And once the backbone is in, then companies such as ZIO can use that to get into the residential areas. There's some other plans still working with the Northwest Planning Commission about putting broadband into the volunteer fire departments and then using that to put up a network of some microwave, which is good, but not as good as the broadband would be. So I'm working on all those programs right now. And have developed them quite efficiently as far as money goes and they are expensive.
I was really impressed actually when I first started running in what worked the county commissioners, the current county commissioners have done to get the ball rolling on this. I don't think that the public knows about it as much because the public isn't really being served by it. It's more at this point, businesses that are able to access it. And I think that's the next step in this is, I, I was working on it at the federal level and it was very interesting because I knew there was a lot of money going towards rural broadband initiatives, but I wasn't getting to see where it was happening on the ground. And I've gotten to see where it's happening on the ground because of some of the things that Tim and Chip have been doing. What I want to see now is the next bridge is making that accessible to the public, not, not just businesses and how can we reduce the cost for businesses that do want to tap into it, not have to spend fifty thousand dollars a mile to do it.
I actually sit on the committee which Tim speaks about and it's been a great opportunity over the past three years to get federal funding for the Northwest Commission to get broadband to volunteer fire departments. We pilot it in Warren and Eastern Erie County, we get the broadband, volunteer fire departments, we put a microscope on the top and they broadcast to the communities so they have access. I actually blew from a house that had access to, now I have nothing, I'm not using that. But if you go to the state maps, it says I have fiber. The FCC maps that everyone goes off and being served or underserved are incorrect. And it's a big thing that I've been pushing over the past three years, how do we get to residents? We talk about business, there's fiber everywhere, the infrastructure's built, it's everywhere, but there's no companies that want to lay the lines to you and me at home. They don't care because there's not profitable for them. And that's where the Pennsylvania range comes in the most. The Pennsylvania range brought electricity to rural America. The Pennsylvania range now is working to broadband to rural Pennsylvania people. It's the agricultural force. So I say about our number one industry, agriculture. If farmers can't get access, then guess what happens? The farms die because they're, they're in the nineteenth century, not the twenty-first century. So it's an industry-driven thing through more than just you and me saying we need it or the big industries saying we want it. They can pay for it, but us as private consumers can't get it. So it's a big question for longer than a minute, but there's a lot to be done and it's working and it's moving forward, so I just say that.
Okay, and the last question, you get to start, Chip. What, this is our last question of the evening. What do you see as a solution to the opioid epidemic in Benango County?
It's a cultural question at one point. The opioid epidemic's kind of winged off and now it's a meth problem. It's more of a substance abuse disorder, which is what it's being termed across the state. It's people getting addicted to whatever it may be that's addictive. The opioids were the big portion, the big issue, the next thing's meth. It's a supply and demand issue as well. Back in the late nineties, cocaine was pennies on the dollar. Now cocaine's two, three thousand dollars an ounce or whatever the measure is in. Now heroin's that cheap or prescription pills are high, but you have a better, easier access to it. Now meth is third cheap coming from Mexico, California way, pure meth, they're not making it at home like they used to and blowing up their homes. But we're always going to have a drug problem, it's staying ahead of that drug problem so it doesn't become a ravaged thing, killing our kids, killing our brothers, killing our parents. How do we get that to turn? So we got to stay ahead of it because right now it's, it was opioids, now it's flipped to meth. What's next? What is the next thing and how do we get it proactive instead of reactive, which we are usually reactive on program? And how do we be proactive instead of reactive, which we're usually reactive, not proactive?
Is this waiting next? All right, coming at me. All right. So there's, there's actually been a lot of headway in opioid nationally. I think that wave has kind of crested, but like Chip said, there is still a huge drug addiction problem. And this is the stat that has always stood out to me ever since I first read it. I've had friends of mine, relatives, I know people that have, I think all of us have been touched somehow by the opioid epidemic. But why is it that in a county, Lackawanna County, 300,000 people had more opioid deaths than Manhattan that has 8 million people? What's the difference between Lackawanna and Manhattan? It's opportunities. It's that there are jobs that give people self-worth, that people are, that people have a hope to do better for themselves and their families. And we need to make sure it all comes back to growing, to growing our economy around here. And that's my time, so.
Like Chip was saying, the opioid epidemic, it wasn't really an opioid epidemic, it is not a meth epidemic. It is an addiction problem. We are at the forefront, the county is, the county including services departments of treating those addictions, helping people continue. In the past, it was always you treated them until they had broken their addiction for that time period and then you let them go. And it takes, we see people back seven or eight times with these treatments. So now what the county has done is moved forward with a kind of a breakthrough type of thing. It's the edge that we are following people now. We're helping them. We have life coaches who continue to interact with these people. Actually have jobs, make sure they have the jobs that make them feel that they are part of society and important. That keeps them away from addiction. Same is saying is very true. And we're working at the county now and we have had some success with it, very good success. We continue on with that.
It's like I said, it's, it's a cultural thing. It's getting these people out of that lifestyle. It's giving them hope. It's, it's helping the local economy around here. You're giving these people something to do. Idle hands are the devil's playground. So it's about staying on top of it, not just treating them when they're locked up in jail or when they turn themselves in. It's keeping up with them. It's, it's following them, making sure that they're staying with their treatments, that they're going to their, you know, narcotics anonymous groups. It's about trying to help them become productive members of society and get them out of the lifestyle that they're stuck in.
As a Pennsylvania state constable, I would take people in all the time if they were in county jail and there are a lot of repeat people I would take in. And some of them did have drug addictions. But one thing I always try to do is encourage them in some way. I was talking to a guy the other day who was saying that his son had to go out west because the people that he hung out with around here would keep pulling him back to the lifestyle he was once in. So I think like Mike had spoken, I think maybe Chip about, you know, getting these guys, ladies and gentlemen, the help that they need and continue to hold them accountable, but maybe try to get them in a different area where, where their influences aren't the same as what they've been around. You know, I've never had an addiction problem, so I don't, I don't know what kind of struggles they have mentally, but I know that they need to have the encouragement to know that they can succeed past that.
I think it's important to, to work with, like we just said, one in Franklin, open up a rural regional recovery that are helping people that are addicted. We can help working with them to help these people and give them a reason for cleaning their, and have responsibility for themselves. That's, that's important. If you hear stories about parents showing their kids how to shoot up because they wanted to do it properly. And, and I've heard stories where a mother put heroin in her minis water. And those are the type of people we have to reach and try to help because it's obvious that they're not able to help themselves.
Okay. Well, that concludes our questions for the evening. So now you each have one minute to give your concluding statement. And we'll start down on the end with Mr. Delaney. We'll work back to, back to votes.
All right. Again, I want to thank you all for coming out. Thank you to Chris and Mark for monitoring this and the Grange. I'm asking for your vote because as I said earlier, I live this life every day. You know, I work towards economic development with the Chamber. I'm an elected official. I sit on the city council, so I have experience around the government. And I feel that that offers me a unique opportunity to merge these two worlds. I've already built the relationships up with the business owners. I get to talk to them all the time, hear what their solutions are, what they think we can be doing to increase the job, the vibe of workforce around here, what we can do that will attract other businesses that are similar to them. Again, my name is Mike Delaney. I'm on the Republican ballot. I'm asking for your vote. I'll be third. Thank you.
So my business experience has been very successful for, for me. And I say this because, and I mentioned this before, I worked at a company called Strong Sales years ago. I was back and they didn't give you an hourly rate. You had to, you had to work for what you got. So you got 10% of your total sales. And eight years I was there, I grew around up to 600 customers. And I didn't do it just by people waving me down. You know, I took a business, a route that was doing $240,000 up to over $500,000. And, you know, I take pride in what I do. I'm a hustler. I get out, I can build relationships, I can, I can sell to people. And you might not think that's a quality that you need, but when you're trying to attract businesses to come in, you have to be able to close the deals. And I've never fallen short of be able to close the deals in, in my business world. You know, even with our business, the lawn care and landscape business, you know, we grow every year. So my name is Joe Corelli. I'll be first on the ballot and asking for your vote.
Like I said in other forums, I'm not a politician. I'm a businessman. I've been working for my family business for longer than half of these guys up here who've been alive. I've been working for 37 years. I've owned it for over 25 years. There's some issues I'm not familiar with, but I'm a hard worker. I'm a dedicated man and I'll work hard for you as your county commissioner. My name's Darryl Cards and I'm number two on the ballot.
Thank you for being here tonight and thank you for listening to us. One last piece on the opioids. I sit on the state behavioral health task force. And the one other piece of that is mental health issues. The mental health issues these people deal with. We always look at it as an opioid problem. It's a mental health problem that deals with substance abuse things often. But you don't get that information and that resources if you stay in Banango County and sit behind a desk. You get that by leaving Banango County, talking with your other commissioners across the state, talking with leaders across the state to find out what is going on and what solutions they have for problems. I say I'm always working for you and I try to and I always do. And I made that promise myself and I made that promise to you and I will continue to do that. So as we go forward, Banango County can't grow unless we talk to others and we work together and we partner together with those that are around us and those that are across the state. We have solutions to everything, but if we do, we make a wheel together, that wheel will be a lot better made than us making our wheel by ourselves. And those connections need to be made together. So I tell you this, I'm first on the ballot, first in your heart. Chip will be our pick to make on the first.
I'm Sam Green. I'm running for county commissioner because I feel that I have the experience that I can bring to the table experience that no one else here can offer this county. I am also doing it because I love Banango County. Why do I love Banango County? I, my roots run deep here in every part of the county. In Edmonton, Franklin, Ollie City, Greens have been serving this county for generations. It's my home. I care deeply about the future of this county and making sure that it's as rich as the history of this county. And that's why I've devoted my adult career to public service from Banango County. I've learned a lot, watched a lot of the best practices from counties all around us. And I have a lot of, I have a lot of good relationships that I've built with businesses and elected officials at every level. I want to bring that to focus on Banango County and I will do that with your vote. Please, I'm asking for your vote, May 21st, Sam Green, Banango County Commissioner.
I'd like to thank everybody for being here this evening and allowing us to talk to the people that are live streaming and those that will watch us later. I'd like to thank these gentlemen up here for giving themselves, putting themselves out to run for this office. It's, it's not an easy thing to do and they're honorable people and I'm going to thank them. I'd be nervous, but I also thank Bonnie Summers who can't be here this evening, asking to take for your prayers, please, and she has some to pray to her families. So that'd be nice to do for her. I appreciate you do that. I always end the forums with getting out to vote. These gentlemen up here are working hard for your vote and for us to be elected with less than 30% of the vote, 25% of the vote is not a good thing. Anybody here, I'm sure gets out and votes. We need to get your friends, your neighbors, your relatives out to vote because you have to honor these men for what they do and for Bonnie for giving themselves and putting themselves out there. And to do that, we need to get out and we need to vote in May 21st. Thank you.
I would like to thank all of you. I think you all have presented yourselves very well tonight and it's going to be a hard choice on May 21st. Now we do have one or two row office candidates here. And Lana, did you want to stand up and introduce yourself? This is for prethontory Lana Linden. Is that correct? Okay, go ahead. Give us a little.
Hi, I'm Lana Linden. I'm running for the preliminary area of the fourth office. I've been working there since 2011. I started as clerk, worked my way up and now I'm second deputy, which I hold. First question I got asked usually is what is the preliminary? The legal definition is chief clerk of any various courts of law. Basically what we do, any criminal or civil matter that goes through the courts in all of Banango County goes through me. So we are busy. Any civil or criminal matter, we also do tendencies, ruins and juvenile. We do appeals to Superior Court, Superior Court, Capitol Court isn't for. Any questions you have about it, we have some to answer.
All right. And for treasurer, Deb Sharp is, is running. Is she here tonight? Okay. The other candidate for prethontory is Jamie Hunt. Is he here tonight? Okay. Auditors, Heather Monikern, Jamie Weaver and Terry McFadden. Are any of them here tonight? Okay. All right. Well, I think, are there any other candidates for local office here tonight? School board members, whatever? No? All right. Well, then I believe we've come to the conclusion of our evening. And I'd like to thank you as an audience for coming tonight. Remind you to get out and vote and I appreciate your interest and your questions were very good questions tonight there. So thank you.